How's I'm doing? Don't, don't go there. I'm gonna take a turn on the stairs, right?
Oh, the battery's dead.
There we go. There's your son. Alright, let's get this meeting started. So, do you want to take a role?
Yep, Brenneman.
Here.
Kill.
Brother.
Monahan.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Manning is absent with notice.
Before we give a motion on the agenda, the Fire Chief Brian said he won't be able to make it tonight. So whoever makes the motion to approve or amend the agenda, if we can remove, Fire Department report.
Make a motion to amend the Fire Department report by Brian Schumacher.
And approve the agenda.
To approve, that's what I said.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Approved minutes of previous meeting, regular meeting, eighty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Arden.
Yes.
Mark. Travis.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Approved bill submitted for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Yeah, we're gonna have a discussion.
Yeah, so like, did I say it or you were? What was moved the Mifflison water line?
It's a part of our Mifflison road project. Coming down where the Colton Road, you know, should be that area.
Yep.
Rural Water has a water line in there and, you know, we're doing part of that.
Okay, yep.
And they had to move that for this project.
Okay. And does that have anything to do Mitch with, I've heard people say that their water's been cut off, there's been bike lines hit, rural water's been shut off two or three times out in Hartford Heights?
Oh, I, I don't think so.
Shouldn't affect Hartford Heights?
Shouldn't, yeah. That line comes from across the interstate.
Okay. Alright. That has nothing to do with this, but I'm sorry, I just wanted to add. When I seen that, I thought maybe that had something to do with it.
I don't think so, I guess.
Okay.
Friend of the fixer, repair lock and amplifier, eight dollars.
There was some vandalism that busted one of the locks. They had something jammed into it. We had to have to take a hard key out and the other one had a key that was sticky.
They came all good?
Yeah, we could get our keys going.
Dead little locks.
Really?
But they roped some stuff, stuck a stick in here and roped off one of them and had a toothpick or something like that.
Wouldn't be cheaper just to replace two of them?
Can't get them open though. Couldn't get doors open.
I bet I could try again. I bet I could try to get the door open.
Should've torched the doors off. That would've been, that would've been a couple thousand bucks. That would've been easier.
Here's another one. Park. Oh, his new bathroom, door and knob, four thirty-one. So that's the door and the knob?
Yep.
We didn't buy a four hundred and thirty-one dollar doorknob?
No, it's the door knob. This is not the family. When we decide to start locking, change some doors off. So we can actually open the door.
I haven't been able to pick on law more than these years, so it's fair enough.
We have them under doors.
Here's one. Here's a good one. Park. Floor cleaner, air freshener, one thousand seven hundred and five dollars.
The air fresheners are about, I'm not sure, twelve, sixteen dollars a can. And we buy like three or three cases.
Automatic. How many pieces we load?
Usually buy two to three at a time or more. Not sure, Jess ordered it, so I couldn't really tell you exactly how much it was. Three.
I can pull it, I thought we were gonna pull off.
Three case, what's that?
I can pull the invoice.
I'll hold it later when I sign it.
Okay.
So three cases of, you know, fifty-five gallons of floor cleaner?
The floor cleaner is like five gallon buckets at a time. And we put in all the park bathrooms got in there, so you don't have to haul it back and forth.
It just, I know we buy in bulk, it just, that price just stuck out.
You buy fifteen, hundred dollars.
Get a buck out of gallons.
Gonna be me.
That's all, that's all.
Can I ask one more? Where did we take the money for doing the library? I don't recall. Just out of general?
General fund, yeah.
And is this the whole bill? The sixty-seven, but there was concrete too, I seen in there. What else did we have?
There's electrical, yeah.
Okay.
And there's gonna be about another seven hundred and some dollars per fencing around there.
What did we figure that at, about ten? Eight to ten?
We, yep, I looked at through minutes, we figured about ten. It's gonna actually come out to about thirteen. But we did get a grant to reimburse part of that back.
Okay.
Actual cost maybe only nineish.
There's no grants in the works too. What's that? There's another grant in the works, it's two dollar a year. I don't know if we'll get that or not, but. Okay. Any questions?
Alright, any more questions? Call the vote, Mark.
Yes.
Travis.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yep.
Scott.
Yes.
Arden.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Public comment section. Anybody here for public comment? Alright, moving right along. Orders, resolutions, applications in here, special event application, West Central Homecoming Parade. Theresa, do you wanna do the highlights of that?
Yeah, so this is an application for the upcoming homecoming parade that you have in there. On their application, they originally put it September seventh. That was a mistake. It's actually September fourteenth is when they're gonna do homecoming. We could have a representative here from the school, but they called and talked to me about it. Basically, nothing has changed from the previous years. They're gonna start at the high school, come down Second Street here along me and then back again. So route's the same, you know, they're, they're, you know, same rules and regulations for their parade. They haven't changed anything. It's gonna start about one, one-thirty. They're gonna wind up at one and then one-thirty they'll do the parade. They are asking like previous years to waive the five dollar fee.
Make a motion to approve the West Central Special Events Application with the way, the fee waived for, did you say September fourteenth?
September fourteenth, it's gonna be up.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, moving on to visitors. I see Matt Evans is not here. Probably he goes to eat, but speech last night. So, does anybody else know they have anything to add to that?
I'll just jump in real quick, like I was, last week, you know, this little quick thing that I don't know if I forgot it or not. But, but, I mean, I did my, okay, coming home about six, six-thirty. And they were talking about last night about the soccer match. I couldn't believe it. I was really surprised. I mean, there's more vehicles out there, of course I wasn't out there during Jamboree days, than I've ever seen before. And, and, I mean, it, it, it looked like an event center. It really did. It was, it was kind of fun to see because I'd never seen before. And that's really all I wanted to say is that I come around the corner, looked at it. I was gonna see what kind of dirtwork was being done. All of a sudden, there was actually an event going on and it was very impressive and a lot of people, so. Check.
Alright. We're gonna move into reports. And we're gonna do this differently than in the past. Because I'm playing mayor tonight. City staff, you guys wrote the report. City council, tell us, read that report. So I don't wanna sit here tonight and listen to anybody reading their reports that I regret. So unless there's something different in your report, or something in your report that you wanna touch on, then feel free. But if there's no highlights, then we're moving on. So let's start with Jesse. Anything, not in your report, Jesse, or anything you wanna?
Yeah, I'll touch on one thing that I, I'll expand on a few things that are just mentioned briefly in my report. One is Jake drove with our corporation, invited me to speak at the Sioux Falls Toma Club on Hartford Development Happenings. We had a very positive response from these Sioux Falls Toma Club members. I received one question from somebody that wanted to know if taxes in Hartford were still high. And I said, well, may have high taxes, be a great, high quality product. Turns out it was Warren Friesen who asked the question. Didn't know who he was at the time, but I got a lot of great feedback following response to the question. So if you're part of any service clubs in the Sioux Falls area, looking for people to speak at them, please keep in mind it's a great way for you to get in front of decision makers to talk about what's happening in Hartford. That's pretty much it. You're a little.
Thanks, Jesse.
Let's get over to the fire, that's off the agenda. City engineer Mitch?
I really don't have anything to add to the report. The project's been going well. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Hey, let me back up. Does anybody have any questions for Jesse? Alright, anybody got any questions for Mitch?
So what are they thinking on, they still October?
Yeah.
First fire?
Yep.
What about sidewalks? When are they gonna start on the sidewalks, do you think?
You know, I kinda thought they were gonna start it already. I think the, this recent rain just put them off a little bit. I think, I know they had it scheduled for last week before the hell of a rain. So I think that's gonna be coming pretty soon.
Any correspondence with John Jordy? Jordy, I left a call, a message with him about two weeks ago. We've been playing phone tag ever since. Has he touched with you on any concerns on Mifflison?
Not me, but I know I've been in contact with Ross. For the auditor in the project. And I remember Ross saying the last time they spoke, you know, they're, they're building that. I think they got two foundations going and, you know, cul-de-sacs. And they're just, you know, they're, they're sitting fine with their needs, I guess. They've been able to live in and out. They just wanna be able to have that sewer ready here. And then for them, as long as they got the sewer placed in the next month and a half, it should be fine for them. It's the impression he gave us.
Thank you. Now anywhere I need to talk to about?
Okay, thank you.
Based on the discussion last night, with sports complex, if we were to want to agroline those areas where the fields are, how, how does that factor into what we got going on right now?
Um, you know, right now they're gonna be shaping just the infills and sowing it down. What we did with the last project is, you know, you just pull out that area where you're gonna put your agroline and put your agroline down. You might wanna, you might find it might be easier once the grass is established to go in there and cut that area out and put the agroline. But I know that's what they, they did with the other phase. If you're thinking, are you thinking about? What's that?
We didn't put any in there, we left it out.
Did they use it well?
We brought the, we put the agroline in.
Oh.
So if, if we're going to do that, would that change the cost or scope of that project?
Uh, we could talk to the contractor and see if they'd be willing to, to overdig those areas a little bit. It would be a change to their scope, yes.
Council, are we alright with having him do that? Or do we need to, how do we do, do we need a motion to do that? To have him investigate that, or how's that?
I'm not sure I follow you. I guess we're, you put agroline only here now?
Well, no, because the discussion last night when we were talking about the budget was, why should we put down grass seed and we're gonna dig it out and put agroline in, correct? That's what I gathered we talked about last night.
I don't, I don't think, I think, I think Theresa can, or the council can get a bench direction to talk to the contractor and see, see, you know, what's possibilities of, of digging that out.
Right. I'm just asking the question, Mark. I don't wanna step on anybody's toes.
I think, I think Jesse could just talk to the contractor.
I'm Mr. Political, correct?
Oh, I know you are.
Yeah, with the meaning?
You mean how much could change your?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to find. That, if you wanna know, that's what I'm trying to find out. If we decide to do this because we're gonna buy the agroline, correct? That's, we don't have that budget at anywhere in this dollar figure. No, we're gonna save a hundred thousand on grass seed.
Well, talk to him.
You know, I'm just throwing a number off. Yeah, if it's a hundred million dollar field, it's gotta be a hundred thousand grass seed.
The last, the last fields we did, they left it low and then we had, we actually got the contract, not that contract, we had a contract with Red Rock or Red, Red Rock.
Out of Minneapolis.
Right, yeah. And they brought in agroline and we just delivered, had it delivered out there and we put it in ourselves and.
Yeah, I'll sure, I'll check with them.
Can you do a little, is that right?
We're looking for you to provide an RFP.
RFP, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna back up the truck just a little bit and, and, well, I am because, you know, we're, we're almost making the assumption, number one, everybody had four softball fields.
No, we're not making that assumption.
Well, then we, I sure as heck did a lot of baseball fields with agroline.
We will need to know that. I mean, because a baseball field's infield.
There's not, really, it's gonna be grass.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm making a softball inside recommendation we come after our next sport, right? Yeah, okay. We're not gonna do anything.
We talked about that the other night.
Right, right, right. When we're there. We're not gonna do anything.
Yeah, we'll get pricing for an hour, whether it's softball or baseball.
That's all I wanna know.
Alright, any more grass or agro more on this kind of thing? Wow, that it? Alright. Any more questions for Mitch? Go on. Alright, Craig, what do you got just round here?
Slurry seal's actually gonna start tomorrow at seven. They're gonna be hitting Second Street first, then go up to Mont. And then I'll be hitting the other ones the next, the following day. Guess the only other thing is sometime down the road, we need to start talking about Emerald Ash Board and what we're gonna do with the trees in the park, stuff like that. I did a count to the park, they had about ninety-five to ninety-six ash trees in the park. Will lose quite a few. So we'll kinda, some will be touched on here when the meetings. The only other thing that I was gonna just throw out to you guys is Brad Behrens at the school called me about using their golf cart to haul the equipment out across the softball field. And I told him that was not gonna be acceptable. So I said, if he had a problem with that, answer, he could come to you guys. And he said he was just gonna live with that answer, so. I guess, my thought is, we let them go out there, another organization's gonna wanna be out there. Pretty soon you're gonna have thirty golf carts out there driving across ball fields. So just gonna keep watching.
We did have an issue last week with the high school soccer team. It was after the rain we had last week. The very next day, we had people coming, they were coming in from our parking lot, driving all the way across our grass and tearing it up.
Really?
Parking to watch the games, you know, in their vehicles and then out. Plus they were coming in Central State's driveway, driving through Central State's property and driving to see the game. So I went out to pictures, they tore up Central State's property pretty good. I thought I would get a call about it because they, you know, it was all muddy, so they tore up all that grass. You can see the, the tracks and all the divots in our property, you know. Taxpayers paid a lot of money to, you know, grade that and seed that and fertilize it that, you know, need to redo it. So, you know, that's kind of our discussion. I talked with Brad Behrens after that. They were aware of it, he told them. We're putting up some signage, you know, we said we'll do signage before that, but their staff's gonna have to watch that. We can't have vehicles driving out on tar fields and tearing them up, so. He said they would watch it. We, we at the Central States are gonna, we put a stakes and rope that off so they can't get through there now and we put signage by our parking lot. But like I said, we don't want to start letting people do that or, you know, we're gonna be out there repairing fields all the time. Because they do move around those fields, so, you know, I mean, driving through an area that we are, we're trying to get the seed to come or, you know, the grass to come and make good fields, so.
Save our sports complex will take on a whole new meeting. You know, we're gonna have that picture on Facebook. You're out there. Those kids are around twelve to twenty miles playing soccer and their parents can't walk two hundred yards. Alright, any other?
That's all I have. Guess you wanna discuss the payload or?
Yeah, we're about ready to, we're about ready to chew that bone again. Can you, do you feel confident that you have all the information for the Emerald Ash Board? You got numbers, treatment, specialists, have you done all that?
I've.
Cause I, cause I would suggest when you feel comfortable presenting that, then just talk to Theresa and put it on the agenda.
Yep, we'll probably do it for your next, the next couple of weeks. We talked about today again, too.
Just make sure you have all the information before you bring it in.
Yep, I'll have it all. More than enough information out there on it.
That was in the city park.
Yeah, just in the city park.
You know, how many total did we have?
I drove down a few of them and then.
The bash, so I'm talking.
Yeah, I mean Boulevard, there's a lot of big ones. And I did a count on all the Boulevard trees and I drove down just a few of them here the other day and.
So when you discuss it, I'd like to know percentage?
I'll get a count of that.
We talking half are ash or not?
Yep, and I, I'm not gonna count all the backyard ones because they were strictly homeowners, so.
Maybe it looks good. You'll miss us. Alright, it is currently seven eighteen. We're only gonna talk about this payloader for five minutes or less. So.
I'll start, are you on?
By seven twenty-four, we're wrapping it up, moving on. So if somebody wants to start talking, you know?
Okay, I'm gonna start and I'm gonna kick her off. I'm gonna make a motion that we purchase the case payloader per spec at a hundred and forty-nine, one thirty-eight. No trade, surplus our existing John Deere payloader.
Second for discussion.
Motivation, Arden?
Dollars and cents. Not that it's always by dollars and cents, but that's the, that's the best dollars and cents options.
That's, that's the best dollar and cents option that's been presented.
Correct. I'm just saying.
But if, but if you're truly gonna go by dollars and cents, then I think, and, and, and get away from city staff recommendation, then I think we owe due diligence to look at Kawasaki, Hyundai, Volvo, and anybody else makes payloaders. Cause honestly, if it's truly dollars and cents, we've only looked at three.
I understand.
Any more discussion? What's the delivery for your, the case or the John Deere? It's a pretty standard spec. About the only thing that's kind of an oddball is the vendors for us. And I, it would be probably within ninety days I could get you one. For John Deere, I'm looking at the end of November. Thank you. Any more questions? I'm gonna call the vote. The motion was to purchase the case outright?
No trade, surplus our existing.
Surplus, John. Scott?
Yes.
Ryan?
No.
Travis?
No.
Mark?
Yes.
Arden?
Yes.
And I'm a no.
So there you go.
So is that a gel?
Yep, that's a gel, it's a need for.
Good a motion, maybe?
Three minutes left. Are there any more motions?
Make a motion to buy the RDO John Deere as written with surplusing the existing John Deere.
I'll stick it, Ken.
Any discussion?
Clarify, are we doing a maintenance plan of three years? What time, was that really?
I think it was quarter to three, right, Craig?
I think that's.
Maintenance plan, three thousand.
However long it would take you to get to three thousand hours.
So we're looking at total cost of one fifty-eight plus nine dollars?
Yep. Two hundred and one, sixty-seven, almost one sixty-eight.
It's one fifty-eight, seven, seven, five.
And ninety-two, seventeen, you gotta add that maintenance in. That is not in that figure.
Okay, tell, I think that price came with that one here, right?
Not the maintenance plan.
The work, the work. Yeah. The one fifty-eight, seven, seven, five. I think it was in the maintenance. Was your motion to include the maintenance plan?
I didn't mention it, but.
Well, it, it originally wasn't proposed with the maintenance plan.
Good point.
So.
The number's still the same.
No, the number would be different with it without the maintenance.
Well, I understand that, but the number's still the same from the time we first looked at this.
Have we ever had the maintenance plan before, Craig?
No.
I don't think we had it either, so. The only reason we entertained the maintenance plan on the John Deere was because the case threw it in. It's factory warranty, it comes there with a loader back. Yes, so.
Let's say, Craig, here we go. Maintenance plan, we've talked about, you know, I know we got sixty seconds. You've mentioned about the history of, of, you know, those guys helping you out and so on and so forth. Could you expand on that in thirty seconds or less?
I guess we've had the John Deeres we've always had or the payloader now. We haven't had any major issues with it. I mean, except for the rear end here, which last year we had that problem with it. And they brought us over a loader and we just paid for hours of use on it. So they've always been, they've always treated us good, but like I said, we've always been John Deeres.
And on that rear end, was there any, how much that rear end, did they get any fixed cost?
Yeah, it was, I can't remember, ten, twelve thousand, but that was way past the three years.
Right. Okay. I'm gonna call the bill.
Alright.
So is your motion's maintenance plan?
Let's clarify whether it is or without, with or without the maintenance.
Okay, then it would be without from maintenance.
Okay. Purchase the John Deere outright, surplus the current payloader, and that's without the maintenance.
That is correct.
So one fifty-eight, seven, seven, five. Ryan?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Arden?
No.
Mark?
No.
Scott?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we're buying the John Deere. And we're on time. Alright. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving right on.
I, I make a motion to have Craig surplus our existing payloader and utilize those funds to purchase. I just get voted that year's one that's the budget for in twenty nineteen.
Second. Good motion. Would you like that to be?
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
There was a second.
There was a second.
Okay.
Who was that second? Brian and, okay.
I would like to see us wait to surplus or make a motion to surplus that until the new one comes in.
Oh, yeah.
Because literally, I mean, there's a motion, there's a motion in August to surplus our payloader. And I believe he just said November thirty.
I, I was hoping common sense would prevail.
Yeah, yeah.
He would do it.
I'm not getting rid of it till I'm done with it.
I'm just saying.
We've got four weeks on it.
I don't know, I just, I mean, we can certainly do it.
I didn't mean like tomorrow.
I know, but I, I just didn't have the new one here before we started talking about surplus of the women.
I'm gonna like, I'm gonna like, Craig, uh, figure out.
Well, the motion's there. Alright, any more discussion, Craig?
I was just curious, if you wanna put it like on some auctions or something like that, or how do you wanna surplus it?
I'm not gonna be that particular. Where we get the best bang.
We have time to talk about it.
Yeah.
There's the delay.
Hold it, you're doing.
Alright, any more? Any more conversation about the motion to surplus the payload? Are you calling the vote, Arden?
Yes.
Mark? Travis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Scott?
Yes.
And I'm a no. Alright. Moving right along. Karen? Lieutenant Wilber, is there anything in your finance officer report that you don't already know?
Nothing additional.
Nothing additional. Anybody have any questions for Karen? I have a question. How did the reconciliation turn out?
Perfect.
Perfect, you say?
Yes.
Well, that's good news. Alright, city finished your report.
You get a cookie.
Theresa? Anything that in your report, anything you wanna touch on, highlights?
Just let you know, I put in there.
Just let you know, um, I put in there, we had inspection on the Mifflison Road project with the state because of RSRF law. They were out today, mentioning lots were there. Basically, you know, it was just paperwork, you know, are you doing this, 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 making sure we're, you know, conforming to all the regulations? It all went well. Um, and then I did make a note that the post office is changing their regulations to.
Wow.
All new developments have to have centralized boxes, no more door to door.
Not just us, it's.
And it's nationwide, they're going that way, yeah, so, I mean, existing areas will still get the door to door if, you know, a new home is in there or whatnot, but all new developments, they're pushing to the centralized, so I did get those letters out, um, yesterday for the developers, so.
Did that, does that affect yarding down there in the new? No. Or since the old section in Kelly Point is?
The old section it wouldn't, I don't know about the new cul-de-sacs, cause I don't know if he's lined up anything with the post office yet, you know, they have to coordinate all this with the post office, I mean. They just asked us as a city, since we have the list of who's all developing, to send a letter out, but.
So you're talking like NAPS for sure.
NAPS for sure, ASMS for sure.
Yeah, okay.
Is there anything else for Theresa?
Someone related, but directed probably towards Jesse, I just wanna make sure that Jesse's getting Craig's traffic counts in your archive now.
Yes, yeah, I am.
Okay, for obvious reasons.
Yes.
Especially that one.
I've already emailed a special person.
I think I know that special person, thank you.
Anybody else got anything for Theresa?
It's on the agenda anywhere else? When's the appropriate time to ask about updates on, on fence?
Oh, it's coming, it's coming.
It's coming.
I'm sorry. Keep jumping around.
It's our own business.
There it is.
It's our business.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you. Review and approve town lease with West Central School, I believe this gentleman's here to talk about that. Theresa, you wanna give the highlight for, uh, the podium that is the drilling?
So we talked about this at our last meeting here, where the, the school wants to put, um, broadband equipment on our new water tower to fully, you know, connect their facilities. Speed Connect is gonna be, um, performing that work, you know, putting up the equipment for them and, um, they, though the school going forward will be responsible for, you know, there'll be their equipment there, you know, maintenance of it. Larry suggested we do a lease just to spell out, you know, make sure everybody knows who's liable for what. He drafted the lease that's in your packet, um, he drafted it basically with a two-year term, um, and that's just so, we'll see how these first two years go, we can review it at that time and then if the council wants to go for a, a longer term, that's fine, no issue. Um, it's gonna be a no-cost lease, but we did put in a fifty-dollar a month, um, fee for the electrical service, because they will be hooking into our electrical. Um, we did talk to Speed Connect about the USC, it's gonna be minimum, he says it probably should be way under that fifty dollars, but you know, the school has agreed to pay that fifty dollars a month, so that two years will give us a chance to, to make sure there isn't any, you know, that that is correct and there's no, you know, crazy amounts there that we're paying. Um, and like that, then after the two years, we can review the lease, basically, it's, you know, they're responsible for maintaining, the schools for maintaining their equipment, taking care of it. If we have to do any maintenance in our tower, ours painting it or whatnot, you know, they have to protect their own equipment, we have nothing to do with it. They're liable for all of it. Any questions, the rest of it's, you know, kind of standard language for, you know, have to carry insurance on it, you know.
I did, I don't know if I seen Theresa's or something in there, do they have to advise us if they're going up there and work on it, or?
They do, yep, they have to get permission for access.
I figured that, I just, I didn't catch.
If that's part of the lease, that they have to coordinate with us to.
Yeah.
And they can't just climb our tower.
Right, yeah, that's why, that's why I was asking.
Yep.
The only, I'm not gonna make a motion, but, uh, I would like to see the money that the city has involved with paying Larry to draft this lease be paid by the school. Since this is a, this is a, essentially a free lease, so to have the taxpayer pay to draft the lease, so the school can, free lease seems, I think, I think it'll lease the school and pay for whatever time Larry had.
Makes sense.
I would imagine, I, we, you know, having got the bill provided, I imagine probably he would spend a couple of hours at least on it, so, you know, three hundred dollars probably you're looking at.
So at the new rate or the old rate?
That's the new rate.
I get through space. Still think that's cheap, pay for a lease, and like Theresa, that's cheap. So any motion to approve lease?
Yeah, I'm just gonna vote any more.
Some move. So.
With or without fee for Larry?
Enter the lease with the school district.
Ask proposed, not with legal fees.
Correct.
Okay.
Any discussion? Would you like to chime in, sir?
She covered all of it, unless you have questions directly for me, I'll be the one probably building it every night, so.
And there's no chance for interference?
These are license frequencies. Will, will we take care of licensing with the FCC and then we'll turn those licenses over to the school district?
Okay.
Any more discussion?
In addition to what she said, she used the word broadband, it's technically, it's microwave, it's not broadband, it's not casting out a range of different houses like ours is conducted up there. Microwave is just a direct point to point.
Eleven flags, Theresa, she's wrong terminal.
Sorry, I don't know the technical terms.
Any more questions?
Mark, did your motion have to reverse Larry or just to approve the lease? Okay, I just wanna make sure I got that right.
Any more questions? Nelson?
No.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
And I'm a no. So that answers. Right?
Yep.
All right, set date for relocation of fence for this dish property. So we know what that is, that's Mr. Thurn. Uh, since the last time we had this go around, uh, I believe he was told to move the fence and I believe there was a movement to help him save fence. I think that movement has stopped moving. So now we're to set a date for him to have the fence removed.
Cause, cause last, when he was at the council, um, the council gave, did give direction, the mayor did, to move the fence, but we didn't put a timeframe on it. So, um, before we proceed any further, you know, whether legally wise or not, um, our attorney says we should give him a definite date to get that fence moved and then, um, see whether he moves it or not and then proceed from there, so. He suggests setting a reasonable timeframe for that move and then we'll proceed on.
So I'm just curious. Is it, is that his fence or our fence being on our property?
It's his materials, but it's sitting on our property.
Right. So that's like a tree that hangs over your property, you can cut the tree down? I need to figure that out.
I'm just.
I think, um, at our next meeting with our attorney present, um, he has some more information for you guys, but he wants to be able to get a date set and get a letter sent out to him, so that timeframe start taking effect.
Thursday's days or what was a reasonable timeframe?
And he didn't tell me, whatever you guys, he just told me, you know, don't let them set it for two days because they're, they're gonna argue that in court, that it wasn't, you know, enough time to this, so. I would, to me, I would think three days is good, but.
Does he know I'm sure?
That's five weeks, that's five weeks.
Anyway, you get this on Saturday. That's perfect. You know? Okay, so.
So Monday is there? Monday, October third.
Monday, October third?
They have the fence moved.
Yep, I'll make that a motion.
That's like the third that we move.
Second. Any more discussion?
I should know this, but I wanna ask anyway. Um, the fence in question, is it two sides or three sides?
Three-sided fence, two-sided.
That, that, that's right.
North side and east side or?
Right. Right.
Or south side might be on neighbors, but it's a neighbors problem.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just chiming in, I, I'm extremely disappointed how Mr. Thurn conducted himself while we were, he was with us. And I'm also extremely disappointed in the fact of disparity in regards to the discrepancy between him and the, um, Chris, Chrisman's. Um, I, 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 I know there's a, there's a line to be drawn in the sand, but I am still kinda taken back by the fact that we could come to a compromise of some sort, um, and, uh, you know, it, 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 uh, it, uh, yes, it could be a slippery slope and then go, you know, carry down the line many times over. Um, but, uh, I'm going, I just wanted to say that on record, just because of the fact that, that, uh, I think we could probably possibly handle this a little bit differently, how? I don't know, honestly, I don't. Um, but, um, you know, it, uh, it's too bad that, uh, that, uh, we have to move with this action, cause I know where it's gonna go, and, um, and, and not be more accommodating, even though Mr. Thurn wasn't very accommodating himself. There, on record. End of comment.
Does anybody have anything else?
Oh boy, now we're sharing. I would need to be on public record to say like Tuesday.
All right, anybody else wanna be on record? All right, we call the vote. Travis?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes.
Pardon?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. New business, reschedule November sixth, city council meeting.
Well, it's a little, a little early, but I wanted everybody to get this on the calendar, the first meeting in November, we're December sixth. That's the general election that'll be held here, so we do need to look at rescheduling that for, you know, if you wanna keep the same week, the Monday, the Wednesday that week, or whatever works for you guys.
I hate Mondays, because.
Do you?
I hate Mondays.
Might be Monday night four, Monday night four, one, two.
Well, it could be something, but, uh, no, I just, I just keep committing to anything on a Monday.
On that note, I'm about to make a motion for Monday.
Yeah, you would, wouldn't you? I'll make a motion for November seventh.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
I'm staying.
All right. Any correspondence, Theresa?
I know we have.
Anybody got any correspondence? All right, anybody have anything?
You know, I, I would like to, uh, request, and I'll, I'll draft it and have it for the next meeting. I would like to make a request to the three individuals, uh, in regards to the payloader, that might sound unorthodox and blueblazes, but you know, we stretched on him, Mark, give me a look now, you have a mark. Uh, just because of the fact that, you know, you don't have to sign it if you don't want to, but this was an arduous process in regards to payloader and, and, um, I think that, uh, as far as Kat and John Deere enforcement and, and, and case, I will propose, uh, with your permission, um, three separate thank you cards for the time spent in regards to the purchasing of the payloader.
I don't think you need a permission to do that.
No.
I'll, I'll, you decide it to John Deere, their thanks will get a come to the back of your chair.
Brad, you wanna thank you card?
Well, I appreciate your confidence in our deals, so I'm glad that we can continue the business with you, so.
Then I'll have it for the next meeting for the other two, Brad, thank you, there's your thanks.
Yeah, I don't need a thank you card, so your, your business is.
I, I certainly hope things don't change and let, let us down, because then it's always gonna say, oh, so.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be repercussions in that.
Look at me, you're talking about.
So I, I expect things are gonna remain good.
Ready.
Still there. Cause if, if it turns bad, I'm just gonna throw Craig on the bus, so. And he already knows that.
It's not Craig's fault, I don't think we're gonna.
Well, that's what I'm gonna play, I can't really, I'm playing you.
All right, anything else for correspondence?
Correspondence, uh, just, I was expecting to see somebody here during the public comments section, but spent some drainage issues on North Main, uh, with the new governor's house going in the east side of the road there, a lot of water backing up. Um, Mitch and Theresa have been addressing it, apparently needed some meeting proposed.
Yeah, we, we finally got the estimate Monday for him and, uh, got a hold of, well, I haven't heard back from Ashley, but next Wednesday, we're gonna sit down and meet with them and, and, you know, talk about their options and what we think we can help with it, so.
Sure. I figured you were gonna, you know, I'd give them an electrical quote. You were planning council, whatever?
Oh, yeah.
Good stuff.
I understand we gave, they got a variance for no sidewalk, correct?
The, the new home, yes, the PMZ.
Yeah, on that note, I see there, it's just a variance, just a blanket variance with no timeline on it, so that is perpetuity?
Unless, and we talked about that, the, the meeting, unless the city council would do action to that block needs to have sidewalks or sidewalks throughout the entire city, or, I mean, that, that trumps, you know, anybody's variance if that city council action would happen, but it is, and, you know, as far as the lump PMZ gave perpetuity.
They don't, they don't have to put it in until somebody tells them they have to put it in.
Exactly, pretty much, yeah.
And, and, and again, I see it's missing from the minutes, their reasoning, other than, yeah, nobody else on the street, has it?
The reasoning given, I thought I had it in the minutes, was that there were no other sidewalks from Fifth Street North.
Fit the, does that fit our list of exceptions for variances?
Um, well, then they talked about, um, they would have been asked to do something that, you know, the other surrounding properties are asked to do. There is one, it's like E or F, that, you know, it puts more.
More burden on them.
More burden on them than what is required with surrounding properties, yeah, something like that it reads.
Well, we are moving forward, you know, this, this thing is evolving life and, and things and, uh, we have to do things now when we wire houses that we can't do ten years ago either.
I know.
So that's a terrible reason to not do.
It, it was kind of a split vote, there was a lot of discussion on it, so you can talk with board members.
We'll just remember that, it's time to.
All right, anything else? And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone do.
Get Ryan in there, get Ryan in there, make sure Ryan gets in there.
So is this your official last meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Should've went on record, so.
All right.
Ryan did okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you gentlemen.